But I don't see why we have to address anything now.
You're saying shut them down?
It's last, next October.
No, I'm saying, are you thinking to shut them down now? Or are you just saying?
No, no, we leave it open.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying too.
Till next October, just, just don't extend it.
We have to take that, do that, right, Eric?
Right, that's right, yeah, we, we have to pass the new local law that basically extends this permitting process. And we just need to pick an endpoint for the, this new extension. So.
So why do we have to, why do we have to address anything now?
Local law expires.
If we, no, no. Just maybe I'm wrong. But if it expires next October. Right?
It expires at the end of this year, December 30th.
Oh, I'm sorry, my misunderstanding then, I'm sorry.
No, no worries. So we just need to, on tonight's, if everybody's in agreement, we have a resolution on tonight's meeting agenda to schedule the public hearing for the next meeting date. And presuming everything goes well, we can, we can pass the local law that night before the 31st and, and go from there.
Yep.
I agree.
I would say pick a date in October, that, that's actually a good date.
Okay, sounds good.
Anybody else thinks differently, that's okay with me, but, you know.
No, I think that's fine.
How's it going?
Okay.
Next item up is a request from Soul Brewing for outdoor dot, for an outdoor dining structure.
So let me share my screen here. You, you guys all have these attachments in Novus, but it's probably easier to.
And we have, but we have Alan from Soul and Robert Hughes, the Village Building Inspector on the, on the Zoom.
All right, so can you see the, my screen?
Yeah.
Have I achieved that? Okay, so Alan. These are, these are some sample structures Alan sent pictures of elsewhere. As the idea of what he had in mind. And then this is a rendering in front of Soul of what he envisions doing. Corrugated plastic sheeting as an angled roof. Wires for heating units, outlets in the eaves. And then infrared electric heaters in the roof, but clear acrylic sheeting to six feet above. Open to the air above, so you'd end up, I think this dark gray represents what would be Plexiglas?
That's correct.
Uh, so in this zone. So one of the key questions here is. What this does to the driver's sightlines as they exit the parking lot.
I'm also wondering about COVID, I mean, is the thinking that this is still a safer way to dine because there's still more air circulation?
There's an article in the New York Times very recently on this issue. And I guess my concern along the lines of what Nicole just said is that if you, I don't have any problem with the construction of something to basically give you an easier way to mount heaters and all that. But if you start to put acrylic in all, along three sides, once you've closed three sides off, you've dramatically changed the airflow. I'm totally susceptible to an expert opinion if we, you know, if we want to get county health experts.
I mean, just, just to be clear, what he proposes is that this is.
I see the little vent at the top.
This would be airspace, so what is that, Alan, is that another?
Oh, I see.
This is seven feet, so that's a foot here?
Yeah, at, at least another foot of airspace and then the entire front is airspace too.
Okay.
But there, there's no cross ventilation at the level of the diners there, which I think is.
Uh, I, I'm happy to leave the acrylic out on sides because that will actually save me money, which I don't have much of at this point, so, so, so if you want to have two sides open, that's fine.
Yeah, I mean, for sure, if, if, if the acrylic is not there, then I would vote for it because I think that that's just a structure to, to allow you to, you know, mount lights and mount heat and all that, and it's.
So what would that look like, Alan, in, this obviously is somebody else's, but it's the same idea?
Yes.
You would have Plexiglas here only, but not on the two ends and not on the side facing your.
I could, I could do it that way, I'd be happy to do it that way, I'm just trying to make something that makes it a little bit more comfortable for people during the middle of the cold winter.
Yeah.
And it looks increasingly likely that, that, that we may not even be able to have indoor seating at all, so.
So then, then that notion here, in the hypothetical that we, you didn't have Plexiglas here and didn't have it there, but you did have it here.
Mm-hmm.
There remains the question of whether this creates a sightline problem.
Right, my, my, my goal with the rendering was, was, I had originally been wanting to do a tent, but I think that would be interfering with the sightline a lot more, which is why I sort of, and not to mention not being nearly as stable. Which is why I sort of went in this direction and, and the rendering's an attempt to show that I think it would leave the sightline pretty open.
So Robert, what, what are the issues from a building department standpoint here?
So, you know, first off, I commend Alan, he's been a first-class operation and person to deal with. So the comments here would strictly be from kind of just overall concerns from the building department. So one of the items is typically on a structure that's 144 square feet or more, usually have to get an architect or engineer. That's usually just for a shed on somebody's private property. This is still a commercial setup and you have patrons in there. So the concern would be really don't get that exemption. So I know it's not a large structure, but there is that concern from a structural point of view and the liability. The other concern is that it is sloping the roof towards the street. We are, got a pending storm and you get snow on top of that and the sheet flow into the roadway. I do think there's some concern of the site distance. And one of the reasons also would be, I believe this would definitely get extended by Dolphin South once they see it go up. That would be my guess. I don't want to hold Alan accountable on a what-if, but it's not easy to navigate out of that driveway now because the, the roadway is narrow. But, and this rendering does depict it in a great, you know, fashion, but you have to have the tables, chairs, and hopefully for Alan's sake, a lot of people there, not a lot, but enough to fill the spot. It's, there is a concern coming out of that area with a tent or with the structure. Clearly, I would hope myself and the board would want to do anything possible to help the businesses, but as you know, we do have to look at from the bigger, greater picture.
Well, I'm sorry. I feel, I feel like, you know, I drive out of that parking lot a lot. And I just go really slowly, I mean, I don't know what anybody else does, I can only speak to my own. But when I pull out, I pull out really slowly that you, you, you can't see around the corner to the left, you can't see around the corner to the right, you know, you gotta go really slowly over the speed hump and then over the, uh, the, uh, the sidewalk. And then you gotta stick your nose out a little bit, you know, and then, and then if you see that the coast is clear, you go. If people are not speeding up the road, I mean, to me, it's not that difficult. I, I, I'm just gonna say it's not that big of a deal to see. Other things I can't speak about, but, but, but that, I, I really feel it's, it's not gonna be that big of a hazard because people are going so slowly when they're coming out of the parking lot and hopefully when they're coming up the road now. Can people get into accidents? Yeah, people can get into accidents, but for the most part, I don't think it's any more dangerous than, than anywhere else, you know?
Yeah, I tend to agree with Joe, I was wondering, this is probably a crazy idea, but I was thinking about the fact that in Switzerland, often when there's a new structure that's coming in, you have to sort of provide a. Sort of some of the beams of the structure to give people an idea of what it's gonna look like. I was wondering if there's any way one could have like a mock-up just to, to, to test it out, or is that a crazy idea? Do you know, do you understand what I'm saying?
Are, are we talking about looking at the materials or are we talking about actually sort of halfway building something so we can see what it looks like?
No, I'm talking, it's not the materials, I'm talking about in terms of this question of the sightlines, like would it be possible to just stick up some posts so that we can sort of see to what extent it's a problem?
Oh yeah, I, I, I could certainly go out there and, you know, put up some temporary two-by-fours and take some more photos.
Well, I mean, you could, the easier way would just be to do this on augmented reality so you could be looking at your phone and seeing how it would change things, right? Just upload this into a AR program.
And how would that work when you're like driving out of the parking lot?
Uh, so you could drive to where you'd be coming out, stop safely, and then hold up your phone and then you'd see what it would look like without and then with the structure.
So Alan. How is this anchored to keep a big gust of wind from picking it up?
Uh, this, this is another question where there, a place where the building inspector might have, might want to weigh into. My idea was to actually root, root the, the base feet of the structure to the concrete blocks themselves. And I don't know whether that creates a, a problem for the village with having some holes put in their concrete blocks or whether that's something that would theoretically be acceptable. I would, I would wanna, I would wanna actually bolt those things right into the concrete because then they're not going anywhere.
I mean, it's gotta be anchored somehow, right? I mean, it can't just be sitting there.
No, I can't, I can't just like sort of build that structure and have the, have the feet sitting on the ground without it, you know what I mean?
Right, that would be too dangerous.
No, so, so I guess if you're looking at the front side of it, the, the, that first, the closest upright in the picture, I would want that to be actually secured to the concrete block and then the next one over. Also secured, the, the way, the way I've, the way I've sketched this whole thing out, every one of those uprights is secured to a concrete block. Except for the last, except for the one in the middle of the front and the one down at the far end of the front.
Is it, in the picture, it looks like it's also secure to the building, is that true?
Those are, those are. Those, those, those are electrical wires for the heaters, which.
Ah, okay.
The goal with those was to keep those completely overhead and out of the way because you can't have wires dripping across the sidewalk for.
Right, right, that makes sense.
So, um, two concerns, the least of the concern was actually anchoring it to those blocks, absolutely it's not going anywhere. The concerns from a structural point of view would be the snow load on the roof and wind uplift.
What if you don't, what if you don't put acrylic on the roof?
My other option with that would have been like doing two-by-twelves or two-by-eights or something like that.
You're gonna want something on the roof, aren't you, just to shelter, you know?
You gotta have a roof. Or it won't do the job, right?
Right, right, I mean, that, that, that would have been the goal with the tent, ending any of those other things, that's the goal with the umbrellas that we put out there now. Something, something to give a little bit of cover from the weather.
So Robert, your point about that is, you know, whether the corrugated acrylic, whatever it is, whether, whether it's equal to the load, right?
Correct. Yeah, I meant, obviously he's not gonna want to build something that collapses in the first few inches of snow.
Yeah.
But I'm looking specifically from the village liability. Uh, we, the first point being of an architect or engineer being on this where we certainly have the capabilities, but the responsibility of the village to say, yes, this is structurally sound, you'd probably want that to fall to an engineer or architect so that way the liability of the village is onto a professional. That way you ensure that whatever's.
The liability too, Alan, I mean, I'm sure the last thing you need is another professional's bill, but what do you think of that?
Um, I, I, for me, I would, and I, I, I realize that this was a possibility, suggesting all of this, I think by the time I am hiring an architect and, and those things, that that's beyond my budget.
Right. But by the same token, it's beyond all of our budgets in the hypothetical that some storm blows it apart and people get hurt, right? I mean, that would be the worst of all possible scenario.
But if, guys, if, um, if you have this structure and you only have acrylic sheeting on the one face facing Peter's office, I guess, right? Um, and you don't put it on the top, you just use that as a mounting coin for lights and for the, uh, heating system.
You mean, you have no roof?
You have no roof, but it's the winter, right? I mean, if it's really the weather in the winter, you know, are you realistically getting people out there anyway?
I assume without knowing, you know, that heat rises and you get some benefit by having a roof, right?
I'm just saying like if, if it's alternate to do it or not do it, then does this provide some benefit anyway, or is it just not useful without an acrylic roof or some kind of roof?
No, I don't think, I don't think having a roof is helpful. I mean, and maybe I'm wrong, Alan, but, but to me, I don't see, if, if there's no roof, there's no point. If you have a roof, you know, there's snow, snow slides off, it goes down onto the street, but you know, you shovel it up and, uh, as long as it's, as long as it's secure, I don't know, to, to, to me, it seems like in this situation that we're in, uh, it seems like a worthwhile endeavor to me.
Your point, Joe, is that a roof is necessary.
Yes, I think a roof is absolutely necessary, maybe, listen, maybe you want to do it, I don't know, but I don't see the point without a roof.
Yeah, for me, if I'm not doing some sort of roof structure, I'm back to preferring to try to use a tent, which I'm not too crazy about at this point, or just going back to sticking umbrellas out there and, you know, trying to put an electric heater as close to people as I can get it, and I, I, I don't think at that point that it's gonna be serving its purpose anymore because I don't think people are gonna be comfortable there.
Do you have any knowledge, Alan, of whether Dolphin would want to do such a thing?
I don't, no. I, my guess, my guess would be no, but, um. I, but I don't know.
Right. So. I mean, it, it, it seems difficult to approve this without some engineering, what is your take on that, Eric and Robert?
Yeah, I think from a liability perspective, uh, and, and the other variable is this may not be the last request we get for it, right? So, you know, we, we should know and, and implement the process across the board.
But couldn't we, couldn't we ask? The guy down at DPW, the head of DPW, what's his name? Couldn't just ask him to, you know, look at it and, and consider, you know, uh, I, I don't think it's something that, that, well, maybe I'm going a little, little too easy on it, but, uh, it's, it seems to me that it's, 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 it's worth a try and there can be a, 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 a looksee, you have the, you have the building department, you have the, uh, the DPW inspector, uh, or, you know, um. Down at DPW, anyway, he can, he can look at it and give it a try, I don't know. Robert, anything to add?
Um, I, like I said before, there's prescriptive ways and we have background, more than enough information to determine the capabilities of a structure. I lean towards the Board of Trustees and how you feel about that, if that's a majority believes in it, we would certainly help them out, we want to see the businesses do well. Anything, any way we can help them, absolutely. But that is specifically a village decision with regards to the, the liability.
Right, so I, I don't, I don't want to be in the position of always cowering about liability, but there are some significant issues here, so, you know, we're gonna have a little interesting test here on Wednesday night, I guess, looks like a significant snowstorm.
Yeah, why don't you set it up for Wednesday and see how it does?
Jeff, Jeff was already concerned about snow removal issues with the concrete blocks separate from anything else.
I think also here is the, the proximity to the street, the cars parking, the pedestrian, it's a tight area. So if it toppled over or windblown, it might not take much to hurt somebody, that's where I'm looking at. If this was, let's say, in a, a bigger parking lot, a more wide open area, it, it might have a different perspective, I'm just specifically looking at that immediate downtown area, it's a pretty tight area. All right, so can I, can I suggest this way forward, Alan? I mean, obviously, what you've heard is, we want to find a way to help, we're not sure there is a way to help, but we're not sure there isn't. So two thoughts about that, one is, it will be interesting to see whether the snow removal issues that Jeff's concerned about with the concrete blocks, uh, are, are easily enough addressed if it snows heavily on Wednesday night into Thursday, which is apparently what's gonna happen.
Okay.
Uh, and then, um, we'll just explore a little more on our side, what, what the, liability issues might be. And do, do you have? Did you, did you have still a relationship with the architect who assisted you on your?
Jim Coleman, yeah.
So. Could you reach out to him if he's the guy you might think of and say? Could he throw you some benefit here?
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll touch bases with him, it also sounds like it might be, um, I, I don't know what you think, Robert, but it might be helpful for us to just sort of have a discussion and go through, you know, the concerns that you're having and, and what I might do to address those. And whether, and whether it's, and whether it's actually even feasible, I mean, at a certain, at a, you know, the, the problem for me is that at a certain point it becomes not feasible for me anymore. And, and, you know, it looks like there are any number of reasons why that, that's just gonna end up being the reality.
What are your patrons saying, Alan, are they like saying, we'll stay here through the winter?
Yeah, that's, that, that, that was one of the, that was one of the reasons for that, and even now with the colder weather, I have some people who are just, don't want to be inside, they prefer to stay outside. And I completely understand that, and I could also see things going the direction it's going in New York City if numbers get worse, where, you know, basically we're told that's it, no more indoor dining period, and, and at this point, I'm, speaking for myself, I know that would be pretty devastating and I think it'd be pretty hard for all the other restaurants in town too.
I wonder if we could reach out to other municipalities to see if they've had similar requests, you know, maybe they've done some of the homework.
All right. So indeterminate answer, but a few things on everybody's to-do list. Thank you as always, Alan.
Thank you.
Or as Robert already said, thoughtful effort to do good things, so.
We're all just doing our best.
That's for sure, every day, every day is a new challenge, so, all right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I will, uh, reach out directly to Alan and I'll meet with him at the site. I can even actually reach out to James Coleman as well, we may be looking at something that we all put our heads together and help him out if we can.
Yeah, thank you for that, Robert.
That sounds great.
All right.
All right, so.
Pandemic.
Yes, our pandemic response plan, so I just wanted to update the board, New York State is requiring municipalities to develop a pandemic response plan that has to be submitted by April of next year. Uh, it has to be a document that's put together with the village staff, including representatives from our unions, so the PBA and then CSEA. And there are different aspects of the plan that need to be referred to and, and spoken about. It's basically listing the various positions that are considered essential, identifying those that are non-essential, developing plans for those employees to work remotely if needed, creating a staggered staffing schedule, cleaning protocols, the ability to stockpile PPE and, and source PPE during shortages. Many, many of the, also the protocol for if somebody tests positive for a contagious disease, what, what goes into, goes into effect there, so. All of these things right now, we're drafting, working with some of our colleagues and other municipalities to see how they're going about, about it. So right now, we have a first iteration that we're working on internally, we're gonna then kick it out to the department heads and the union representatives and hoping within the next two to, two to three months, I would say, have something to formally report back to the board and be on schedule to get it passed and filed away by April. So I just wanted the board to be aware of, of that as we move forward. All right?
All right. Sawmill watershed.
So, um, there's some, some backup attached to this document, we are one of 11 members of the Sawmill Watershed Advisory Board. The, the board has come up with a five-year action plan in which they're asking each municipality to come up with at least three commitments over that time period. So, um, Jeff from the Department of Public Works says, and Matt Trainer, the Superintendent of Parks and Recreation, developed that list that's attached to the agenda item. And as you can see, these, these action items need to speak to remediation of flooding, stormwater management, improving water quality, increased public access and recreational opportunities, and improving aesthetics and restoring native vegetation. So, um, uh, the list that we've, we've provided speak to those. Matt's also pulled some that were, were actually listed in the Parks and Recreation Master Plan from, what, 1996, I believe? So some of these items actually still hold true today, but wanted to get the board's input if they had any other ideas that we should kick the tires on, but this is what we're, we're proposing right now. The next step would be to put this on a resolution and formally pass it. It'll be, that's the protocol that the advisory board is, is requesting.
What's that street next to the baseball diamond, is it Hopper, Hopper Street across from Wood and Fire?
Yeah, Hopper Street.
Um, does this, is any, do any of the plans here meet the concerns of those residents at the end of that street?
Yeah, so, um, there is, uh, the, 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 um, we were, I, I should say, did that make it into this?
I think, I thought I saw it somewhere.
Yeah, yep, yep, reexamine flood zones and plains along Sawmill portion of Parkway Field.
Which is, I mean, that's worth, that, that's gonna happen, have to happen anyway as this bridge project.
That's right.
Right? The whole section of the Sawmill between Marble and Grant is essentially being elevated. That's what this massive venture is right now. And, uh, the, the impact of that on us is not crystal clear, fair to say?
Right, right, and, and actually, I've been in touch with some residents from Hopper Street, we've been in touch with the project team at DOT to make sure what they're doing will, will provide some relief over in that area, knowing the history there. So.
Um, I, I have a question about the vegetation piece, sorry, I have to find a plug. So it seems like you focused on Nantahagan Park, I was wondering, I don't know exactly who owns the parcels of land that are along the Sawmill, I know that, um, there's some individuals in the community who have organized tackling some of the invasives there, the invasives are really bad there. But I was wondering if that's something that we can participate in as well, or if there are issues in terms of jurisdiction that make, that complicate that?
Yeah, but most of the area along the Sawmill River Parkway is owned by the state of New York, by the Department of Transportation, so.
Okay.
Uh, that's not our property, now with that said, um, the majority of the village falls with it, within the Sawmill River watershed area, so, you know, we've identified Nantahagan, it's an area that we've done plantings in, but really, if there are other ideas and other, you know, other parts of the village, certainly we can, we can put that into the plan.
Yeah, I mean, it, it might be a good idea to start with just doing an overview of invasives. For instance, like in that area, um, along, along Manville, as you get close to Marble, for instance, you know, there's a bunch of stuff there.
Yeah.
There are certain areas where I'm not sure, you know, who, who owns it, but, um, the other thing is groundwork, Hudson is involved with this, right? And they were involved with the cleanup of, of the invasives along the Sawmill, so I wonder what kind of partnerships.
Well, if you look at page 15 of the PDF, Five Year Action Plan. page 15 of the PDF five-year action plan, it makes reference to removing invasive vines at selective stewardship sites. One Yonkers, one Dobbs Ferry, and two in Pleasantville, one near McDonald's, the other near Grant Street.
Right.
So, and then plant and maintain a native vegetation at Pleasantville, Grant Street. So, and, and groundwork Hudson Valley and the SMRC are all, are both listed as the responsible parties there. So. I mean, that's work already done, I think, right?
Yes.
Total six acres cleared.
Yeah, well, it's never done though, unfortunately.
It comes back.
I mean, part of the problem is most invasives are on private property, right? And so they just.
That's why Nantahagan is also such a viable target for us, right? It's in, it's within our scope and we're, we're up there on a regular basis. It's accessible, which is, which is a huge element. So.
Right, right. What about, just to throw it out there, what about a kind of public education campaign? Because you know, I feel like a lot of people know at this point that invasives are bad and that natives are good, but most people don't actually know why. You know, most people don't understand how important natives are to the food web, for instance, of local wildlife. You know, they don't know that, for instance, if you have a Japanese maple, as beautiful as it is, it's doing nothing for the local ecosystem. Whereas if you have a native oak, it does a lot, you know?
Beavers, right, Nicole? Get, get them out there.
I was holding off on that one. But, um, anyway, I'm just, since this is my wheelhouse, I'm just throwing out some ideas.
Yeah, no, that's, that's a good one. I mean, we could certainly add that to education plan, local education plan about native plant species.
I mean, we already have a, a sample garden that, that Jeff was involved in planting along Manville, that new island. That's all, pretty much all native. So we, we already have certain things in place. It, it wouldn't take too, too much more. And I'm sure, you know, the CAC and other people would be willing to help us to do some education.
We've also, the, the couple projects that the CAC has taken, taken under, you know, the DEC and some state parties have been active and, and helping out with that. So I'm sure through contacts or, or communication with them, we'll get, we'll get something.
Sounds good.
So at any rate, I mean, we're being asked to renew this memorandum, right?
Yeah, well, and specifically commit to three, three items, three action items.
At our expense.
That's right.
Right, so. I mean, it, it certainly seems like something we should do, right? Does anyone disagree?
Nope.
And, and you know, a lot of these things like the plantings, this, these are, these are items we, we would do regardless.
They're happening already.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. So, so we renew that MOU and then what is the process to determine which of the things we do to fulfill our requirement?
We, it's, it's discretionary. It's, it's.
On our side of the table.
Yep.
The CAC, those folks all can play a role, right?
That's right. That's right. So I mean, certainly the flooding, the reintroduction of native plant species. Certainly things that, that we do, we can continue to do. Item two and three, you know, it's more evaluation, but are, are certainly worthwhile endeavors as well.
There, there were also in, in doing my part on it, it was a fortunate accident or, or whatever you want to call it, that at the same time we were reviewing the master plan. So a lot of the issues that were existing in 96 are still, are still there today. Dredging Nantahagan, I think the last time that was done was 96. Talking about some of the, the water redirection over at Nantahagan. So, you know, part of a greater pool project, or maybe not, maybe it's something different, building up a berm or doing something different. But that, that was one of the things that I really wanted to do, point out items that would potentially be a part of a, a bigger project in any way.
Right.
That's where we have to bring the beaver to the table for the discussion.
Oh, that beaver.
You heard that we saw it.
All right.
So, yeah, we'll move forward. We'll, we'll add about the education campaign and move forward with all four items and if any of the board members have other ideas, you know, feel free to reach out. We can chat.
Okay, great. Thank you, Matt. Update on Manville Road Corridor Project.
Yes, I wanted to report that a few weeks ago, we got the, uh, the all-clear from the DOT. We've gone through their gauntlet and they have no, no comments on the Manville Road plans. At this point, you know, they're, they're supportive of pushing the project out by a year. What they've asked is that when we are ready to proceed, we just build in, we build in three months so we can essentially just resubmit the drawings to ensure that it meets code compliance if anything were to change from now until then in their, you know, in, in state, in the state roadway code. So at that point, holding true to a spring 2022 start date, we would plan to resubmit about this April or May and start moving forward from there. So I just wanted to update the board on that.
Yeah, so it's, it's, who knows how it plays out. There was an article in the paper the other day that new construction activity, commercial construction is at the lowest point in the last 10 years. So one does wonder whether in the end that softening of, of demand will start to see some softening of what was just an atmospheric increase in the average bids.
That's right. And, and, you know, if we want to conduct a, you know, get a, an update cost estimate at that time to see if there's been a, a shift in the market, that's something we can, we can talk about then, but certainly we'll have it teed up by this spring.
And as discussed in the past, we got some months to go before we see what other dominoes fall over as the result of, of the whole pandemic. And, and clearly we don't know what the next three to six months look like, right? So.
Sure, sure.
All right. IMA, non-resident customer emergency repair work. This is the issue of folks who are on our water system who do not live in the village of Pleasantville. Eric and I have been back and forth with, along with Jeff Conam, with Carl Fugienzi and Dave Smith, the engineer over in Mount Pleasant. The result being an IMA that we have in draft and which we have on as a proposed resolution tonight that simplifies what had been a more complicated document that was not okay with us in a number of ways, essentially says that when there is a break outside the village, the village will respond and manage the closing of valves, but that the town of Mount Pleasant use their resources to make the repair. And with the idea that the, the overall cost of that repair will be lower than an emergency basis repair by an outside contractor, which is the way we otherwise do it. Still some back and forth about the mechanism by which that gets billed back to the affected homeowners. And, and the clear piece of this is that it's a, it's a measure that we think helps those homeowners, to the extent that when there are repairs, we think that this will get them accomplished at a lower price. It does not resolve the core problem they have, which is that the cost of repairs are, are ascribed to the specific homeowners who are affected by the break, which can be a small number and thus a fairly big assessment. And then the bigger picture of, of how the pipes and system in those areas get upgraded over time. So it, it's been our view for a long time and that we have reiterated that it seems that the only real resolution for that would be for the town of Mount Pleasant to create a water district, a series of water districts or expand their existing districts. And they'll be looking at that. But in the near term, this is a one-year agreement and it would allow at least that relief. If I got that fairly described, Eric?
Yep, that, that's, that's fair.
So again, just, just for the benefit of those who are listening, who, who may not be familiar with it, this has no effect whatsoever on people who are residents within the village of Pleasantville. It's only an issue for folks we supply water to who do not live in the village. And that is give or take something like 470 customers outside the village. Mostly in the town of Mount Pleasant.
That's right.
I have a question if you, if you don't mind.
Sure. Name and address, just so we have.
John Carrero, 77 Stephen Drive.
Hey, John.
I've been in, how I made, I've been in contact with Mr. Morrisey for the past several months on the same issue. Now, my only question is, how do you guys determine what houses are going to pay? And which are not? And I'm glad Mr. Fisher is on because I don't know him, but I'm glad, nice meeting you, sir. It's just crazy. Now, I'm going to go back to 2018. I got a bill for $128.33 simply for road, road restoration and repair. No address, nothing given. At that time, it was 15 homes that were charged. In January of 19, we had a breakage. Uh, sorry, yeah, January 19, we had a breakage in 64 Stephen Drive. It was a home that was vacant for over nine years. The folks who bought the house had just moved in, but they were away for the holidays. That busted right out there by the driveway. No prob, I went to your meeting with Ms. Diane DiGiorgio, who's no longer my neighbor. At that time, it was the first day you started work, Mr. Morrisey, and the woman had retired. So it's a nice way to start. They explained to me that the valve, wherever the valve is shut, south of that would be our homes. At that time, it was 13 homes and it came out to $517.65. Then we had June 30 of 19. We had 72 Stephen Drive, another abandoned house. That was the photographer that passed away. That busted. That was $700.
So just, can I intrude there briefly, John? I, I, I don't, the, the repairs that serve a house are the responsibility of the homeowner. That's.
No, I understand that. Believe me, I understand.
The fact that the houses were, were empty or abandoned wasn't.
That when a home is vacant for so long and the water main just sits there, once that water is kicked back on, there's got to be something to it because that's another abandoned house that went off. Fine. And we were billed for that 700, $517. Now, I get two bills that are nowhere near my home. And we still get paid. Bay Region, Virginia, which is Mr. Fisher, was, was saying that didn't affect me. My water was never turned off at all. The one on Stephen in Virginia, the cup was on Virginia, not on Stevens. Cause I asked the worker, which valve are you turning off? He says north of, of, uh, north of 60, of, uh, 64. So how do you figure out who, who gets billed?
Eric, can you respond to that? I mean, my, my understanding is that it, it is the homes that are supplied by the pipe that broke, but.
Correct. So if they turn off that pipe, I shouldn't have no water. But that's not the case. I have water all wrong. And I'm still billed.
All right.
That's the question I asked you, Eric, back a few months ago. How does this work?
Yeah. And, and so typically who's on the line where the damage occurs? But I, I can get some clarity from the Department of Public Works to see. And if you could send me those bills, can you scan an email? Yeah. Could you scan and email those to me?
Sure, no problem.
And, and I'll send it over there and just, and get a, get a response and see how the formula has been implemented.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, John. You're muted. You have to unmute yourself.
John, you're still muted.
Yeah, there you go.
There you go.
No, I just wanted to get John's contact information because my understanding is that when, when a repair is needed, that the village shuts off the upstream and downstream valves so that water, they can take that apart and no water is gushing out. And that the homes that are affected by that are the ones that wind, wind up dividing the cost of the repair. And so John's comment that he didn't get bills in either case is puzzling to me. So maybe I haven't learned enough yet.
So just before I even start sharing contact information, be aware this is a, a recorded public meeting and whatever you say is out in the public world. So exchange your contacts elsewhere unless it's not a matter of concern.
I'll, I'll, John, you'll find me and I'll find you.
77 Stephen Drive, anybody could come over, doesn't matter. 77 Stephen Drive.
I'll take care of it. Okay.
What time should we be there?
It doesn't matter. The girls wake up at six in the morning. I'm up.
All right.
All right, thank you, John.
Back to your agenda. All right, thank you.
So back to the board, we have this on as a resolution to approve this IMA with a one-year term subject to approval by council. Anybody have any questions, comments, concerns?
Well, my only question is, you know, for the benefit of the, the residents in that area, is there a timeline to actually get this to become a water district? This will certainly help them, but it doesn't really solve the problem.
There, there is no timeline. That's on Mount Pleasant's side, but originally this thing was structured as a much longer term thing. And based on our last conversation, it got switched to a one-year thing because they're looking at that right now. So.
That is a good sign then, you're saying?
Well, I mean, there are a bunch of issues on their side of the table. And they already have, I think, nine water districts and are loathe to add more, but it may be that they don't have any choice to solve this problem. So.
Just so you all, just so you all know, my group is of homeowners is look, also talking with the village. And we're interested in the longer term issues. We see this as a, as a first step and we, we applaud it. And we're also talking with the village and we're going to be pressing the case for turning this into a water district, either attaching it to an existing water district and adjoining water district or creating an independent water district. And those are discussions that won't concern you too much.
Yeah, no, and, and certainly we're happy to help in that discussion in any way we can, other than to say, you know, what we've been clear about is that outside the village, we can't be bonding and borrowing money for capital improvements.
Right.
That needs to happen on the Mount Pleasant side. So.
Right.
In an ideal world, from the village's standpoint, we'd like to have a master meter at the edge of the village, continue to supply water to those folks we have always supplied water to. But simply have a master meter at the point it leaves the village, bill that to the town of Mount Pleasant at a bulk rate, which would, would save you guys some money. And then get us out of, out of the awkward business of, of serving folks who are outside the village. But in the meantime, obviously we'll fulfill all of our obligations that keep water coming to you guys. So.
The, the other question I had was, given the fact that the, the main that comes from the reservoir goes right through our streets, why can't we tap onto that main?
So that's a question to ask Mount Pleasant. I, I don't know the answer to that.
With all due respect, I called there.
Yeah.
You want to hear what they said on my daughter's lives? Sell your house and move. That is their response. So to them, we don't exist.
Kind of a draconian measure.
She's not the friendliest woman. It's the same woman that answers all the time. I did call there, believe me, but the pipe runs directly through our street.
I don't know, obviously there's a desire whenever it can be done for, to avoid the need to pump water in, in a system to maintain pressure. I don't know whether that, what is, what's in play, but again, that's, that's. But again, that's, that's outside the realm of anything we could affect, so.
And the, the other thing I want to say, and I made this comment when I went to the meeting in town, God forbid, God forbid, we're talking about small bills, three hundred, five hundred, whatever it is. God forbid, there's a major disaster on a water main where the bill could be seventy-five, a hundred thousand dollars. What happens then?
It's an absolutely good point, and in many of these cases, the, the pipes are old. So, you know, within the village, we spent a lot of money over a long period of time, three decades or more, not only buying a share of the water filtration plant, uh, that we jointly own with the town of Newcastle, but, uh, relining our existing water mains, adding some new ones, uh, you know, there's a big expense over time. And one of the reasons that it's hard for Mount Pleasant to undertake this is there isn't a mechanism to do that for a district. So, um, it does seem like a water district is the only, only way to solve it. Uh, but again, that's something they're looking into. Uh, whether it would be a new district, whether people who are in discontinuous areas could be a single district, or whether they could just extend the boundaries of an existing district, uh, to include more, more, uh, water customers, so. Again, you know, just to be clear, that's, that's not in our camp. We'll help in any way that we reasonably can, but we can't make improvements, uh, to this system outside the village.
I got you. Thank you.
Alright, thank you all.
Good luck.
Uh, yes, good luck. Uh, you're, you're, now you're, you're, you, you're gonna have a party on Stephen Drive now, because.
So, so Peter, a question, does this mean, will you all take a vote, uh, to proceed with the IMA on this one-year limited basis?
We will, yes, and since it does not sound like we have anyone who objects, I think, uh, it will pass.
I think you're good, John.
Okay, when will that happen?
A little later tonight. It's, it's on our agenda. It is, uh, we start that in, in one minute. Uh, we have a fairly long event honoring youth in the, uh, the beginning of our meeting, but i- it's on for resolution. It's, uh, the last one, I'm sorry to report. Uh, if you're excited to watch it, stay on.
I'm not, I'm not.
I do not think you need to stay on.
In the morning and just let me know whether it passed.
Sure, we can. I, I, I can tell you that it clearly is gonna pass. All five of us are on, uh, I think, nobody has objected, so.
Right.
I think we're rolling.
Well, I just want to thank you for your transparency and openness, and, uh, it's been very constructive. Uh, we consider ourselves a, the interested third party as a customer group. And, uh, I think we're gonna have to turn our attention to the village and see how far we can take it with them in terms of creating any water.
The town, you mean.
The town, I'm sorry, the town, right, yeah.
Gotta get that right.
No, I, I thought I had it right, but I'm sorry.
Alright, thank you, John. Thank you both, Johns, uh, appreciate, uh.
I have a daughter going to college, think, in a year and a half, so please, do something with this line.
Yeah, okay. Uh, we have, can we just quickly, uh, Eric, touch on the Pleasantville Estates Road Dedication Update? And that would cover our.
Yeah, so that Springfield, Springfield Court there, um, uh, right now, it's a private roadway. Uh, they're constructing the last house of that subdivision development. Uh, there are some open items that they need to take care of, but, uh, once it is done, um, there's a, a bond that's being put up for sidewalk work and a car, and a car rail. Once that's complete, uh, to the building inspector and Superintendent of Public Works's satisfaction, uh, will take over dedication of the roadway. Uh, and so they'll be most likely on the next board agenda, a resolution taking over that ownership. Uh, Jeff, the Superintendent of Public Works, has talked about starting road, uh, they've, they've already repaved the road, um, but starting snow removal activities on that road, um, uh, relatively soon to kind of provide relief to that area. So that, that'll be in the works.
Great.
Alright.
Alright. With that, that ends our work session and we can go to our regular meeting.